President Mullinari is on her way here, but in the meantime, we'll get the meeting kicked off. I'd like to call the Lincolnway District 210 Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Lucetti.
Here.
Mr. Lulo.
Here.
Mr. Cozal.
Here.
Mrs. Glass.
Here.
Mr. Kirkland.
Here.
Mr. Kostick.
Here.
Mrs. Mullinari.
We have two people signed up for public comment. I'll let Mrs. Mullinari get it. Ted is our first speaker.
My public comments are directed to Mrs. Mullinari, my friend and board president. I want to thank you for everything you've done for Lincolnway for all these many years.
Thank you.
Karen Towne.
Good evening. I'd like to start by congratulating all of the candidates who were elected in the recent board election earlier this month. I wish you all luck as you work together with the rest of the board and the administration to help our district deal with the many challenges it is currently facing. I do truly hope that you are successful because if you are, that benefits our entire district. I also want to take this opportunity to thank all of my fellow candidates who ran in this recent election. I am grateful that we had so many people who were willing to step up to help our district. Each of you showed your commitment to our district's students and taxpayers. I thank you all for the sacrifices and time that you gave. And I want to thank all the volunteers who helped out on the various campaigns. Those individuals also demonstrated a willingness to sacrifice their time and effort to better our district. I, of course, would like to give a special shout out to the many people who helped with the Citizen for 210 campaign. I'm truly, truly humbled by your support. I also want to thank the people in our district who voted in the recent election. This is a profound and important privilege that we have, and I applaud all who take the time to exercise it. And finally, I would like to ask the board to remember that you now represent every family in our schools, as well as every taxpayer in our district, whether they voted for you or not. And since less than 20% of registered voters in Will County voted in this election, the truth is, the vast majority of people did not vote for any of us, but you now represent every one of them. One of the main reasons I chose to run in the recent election was that I saw a divide in our district developing that truly saddened me. Like many of you, I have family and friends in all parts of the district, and I wanted to help ensure that everyone was fairly represented and that we could once again be a united district. I fear that this past election may have widened that divide, and I am asking you to do your part to show that you are looking out for the interests of all of our residents. This includes senior citizens who are on fixed incomes, families with or without children in the Lincolnway schools, taxpayers like me, who no longer have kids in the district but have a deep concern about the students who followed our kids. I believe by your example, you can help to mend fences and help to make the Lincolnway community a strong, united, unified community. And as one of the newly-elected board members said to me during the campaign, "For our district's problems to be corrected, we all need to work together." I also encourage our community members to stay or get involved. Their input can be invaluable in finding solutions. Again, I wish the entire board and administration the best. We are all relying on you to provide our students with an excellent education, protect our home investments, and help us keep the Lincolnway community a place where people will be proud to come home. Thank you.
Thank you much for the public comments. Moving on to the consent agenda, I have a motion to approve amendments from the March 16th, March 22nd, 2017 meeting, approval of the close meeting minutes of March 16th, 2017, approval of the payrolls for March 20th, April 5th, April 20th, 2017, approval of the March 13th, 2017 District 210 Advisory Committee meeting minutes, approval of the March 14th, 2017 Finance, Building, and Advisory meeting minutes, out-of-state travel, and a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second? Any discussion on consent?
I just have a comment on the advisory committee. I know you are leaving some of the sponsorships, strategic alliances, wasn't discussed, and wondering what the timeline of it would be.
There was some discussion. Dr. Mahat will be talking about the student handbook. She can talk about that list of suggestions, but that's also something we can bring back. So they did some brainstorming and some suggestions. They will recommend that we keep the policy as is, which is a pretty broad-based policy. So as Brad starts and we get started, we've got to look for some of that development. The first place, we've discussed a little bit, is going to have to be signage.
So when will we see that?
I think we can talk about it in May, and then it's something we've got to look after here. The discussion's going to have to be, what do we want the stadiums to look like? I can bring back some examples, because typically, that fundraising's going to kick off here in the fall. I know the marching band will start shortly, signage on the trucks. But the bigger discussion's going to have to be signage in our stadiums, and we can start to put that on the agenda from that.
Any further discussion? Oh, costly.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Cozal.
Aye.
Mr. Lucetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kirkland.
Aye.
Mr. Kostick.
Aye.
Mr. Lulo.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullinari.
Aye. Moving on to student council presidents, we have Mr. D'Nasso or Ms. Kelly Newton? Okay, they're great.
Hello. So, student council will be overseeing our class officer election next Wednesday, April 26th. Although we don't run the class officers, anything other than just the election itself, we will be running the table, and we have 42 students between the next year's sophomore, junior, and senior classes running for a position, which is very nice to see lots of people getting involved next year. And in the future, for student council, we will be electing next year's exec board in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Just like I explained last month, like the teachers of the night, we have set a date, which is May 11th, and we also have 17 seniors on student council and 17 teachers which are going to attend. And also, Teacher Appreciation Week is the 1st through the 5th of May, and we were thinking about doing a treat where teachers get three options to pick from them, and then they get to choose which best fits them. So they kind of have three different options, just one president, not fit all.
Thank you very much. East, Ms. Kylie Need, Mr. Raj Patel.
Hello. So, Lincolnway East Student Council is looking to finish the year strong. Next week, Student Council is hosting its annual Aaron Toppin Memorial Basketball Tournament. Aaron Toppin was a Lincolnway East graduate who passed away in the line of duty serving this country in Afghanistan 2014. So we created this softball tournament in which all of the teams collect fees, and those fees will be directed to the Aaron Toppin Memorial. In addition to that, Student Council Executive Board is planning their framing dinner, in which members of the executive board have selected a teacher who has set an outstanding example for them and have made an impact on them in and out of the classroom. Teachers invited will receive a formal dinner, as well as the student who chose them will give a brief speech about the impact the teacher has made on them. It's a great night where students and teachers come together, and they're honored for all of their excellence. This event will be taking place in a few weeks, and we look forward to recognizing and honoring our wonderful educators.
Thank you.
Last week, Student Council held its elections for the 2017-2018 school year, and 45 students were elected as student council representatives for the following school year through our training building during the lunch hours. And yesterday, during our student council meeting, we held the speeches for elections for the 2017-2018 Executive Board. Student Council members heard speeches, cast their votes using their cellphones, and elected the new executive board. We would like to congratulate all of our newly-elected executive members, including our new president, Anna Vanderpoort. In other news, our Grifon Foods softball program is collecting nearly 800 non-perishable food items, benefiting the Frankfurt Township pantry in a friendly competition between programs. And the Lincolnway Musical is taking place this week, and will be the production in Oklahoma. Tickets are available by visiting the LVE Music website. And more on class officers, though, our prom will be next Friday at the Museum of Science Industry, named the Night of the Museum. Everyone is super excited, especially because all the exhibits will be open for those students to walk around, basically at full access, so that's pretty cool. And our dinner is the Taste of Chicago, so we're going to have Chinatown, Groot Town, Little Italy, Red Bull, and a few others. They'll be open all night. It's not your traditional prom, but I think it'll be very making, very fun.
Sounds like fun. I'd like to go. And students, thank you all for your presentations this year. You truly, no offense to the adults in the moment, truly. Oh, wow. Mitchell and Samantha.
It's just me today. Okay. All right. So this month, Lincolnway West has been super excited about the activities that have been occurring. This past week, we had the columnist Bill Foster come and visit our school. He, during first hour, gave a presentation to students taking a physics class in the past. He was a physicist. And then he also came to my Spanish IV and V AP class and was able to do speeches for students on why they appreciate the ability to become bilingual and where they're going to use Spanish in their future. Tomorrow, our Student Council is hosting a PE takeover, where students will be able to play wheelchair basketball and kind of get that full experience of what our special athletes get to go through during their days. Our prom is this upcoming Saturday, April 29th, and our theme is the Great Passion, which I'm super excited for. We have Hattie Branch with from Lincolnway West come and speak to our science club about the importance of science, because, and our other clubs just kind of continue with their activities. So our Environment Action Club has been doing their weekly recycling. Our Fishing Club is dabbing in action due to the great weather. And our new school is also this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and it's cashmere weekend.
Great. Thank you all very much. Moving on to Community Relations School Number Two.
Hi. So, goal number two for Community Relations was set last year, beginning of last year. It's to streamline improved communication tools to help student achievement and enhance community connections through open communication channels. One of the huge parts of this was the electronic communication. So basically, what we focused on was Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, and then developing creative social media initiatives to showcase student success in spirit, and then updating the website to streamline information in an organized manner. So, to show you guys, kind of give you an inside look at what Facebook looks like, I'm able to read their stats on a daily basis at any time to look at how our likes are growing, how our followers are growing, what kind of posts people are reacting most to. Surprisingly, it's student success, and so that seems to get the most reaction, most likes, most comments. Since April of last year, our Facebook following has grown by 25%, and it's about nearly $1,000. Our Twitter following has grown by 938%, but before you celebrate, we only had like 23 Twitter followers when I started, so that's a very blown-off statistic.
It looks good.
And it does look good. Our Instagram account was created in June of last year, and we're currently at 1,130 followers. This is of last week sometime, so right now, I think we're close to 1,150. I'll take those extra 20. So when we look at Facebook, when you look at social media networks, you're really catering towards a certain audience in each. So Facebook, the majority of our likers are generally parents. They're between, 60% of them are between ages of 35 and 54, so it's a little bit of an older crap. We are talking to parents when we're talking on Facebook. Overall, when we look at our video views, we have had over 111K organic video views. The difference between organic and paid is we're not putting any money behind any advertising on Facebook, which is something many districts do. Looking into my Community Relations pledge, it's something we can consider, where you can basically target down to, I want to hit people in this type of geographical area, in this age group, this gender, so that they see certain things that we post. It's a good way to gain followers and engage in the community, but it's something you have to measure the reward for when you're looking at what type, who you're looking to hit and how many are available in that area. We received over 108,000 likes on Facebook as well. So, as you can see in the center here, that's where the bulk of our followers are, mostly women. Facebook is generally, overall, women are more active on Facebook than men, women are more active on social media than men. So that does make sense, but we're really only 21% of our fans are male, and 78% are female. 62% of our likers, like I said, are between ages of 35 and 54, and most of our likers are online, as you can see down there, around 8:30 PM. That varies by day. On weekends, you're going to see that graph looks slightly different. It's a little bit more level, whereas on weekdays, 8:30 makes sense if you think about like dinner time, spending time with the family. That's going to be the time those people are on their cellphones scrolling through Facebook. And then Instagram was started last June, like I said. I'm happy with the way it's gone so far. There's still so much more I could be doing with it. Each of the schools has their own handle. This is the district Instagram, and basically, it's a way to highlight student success just as Facebook, but here, we're catering more towards students. If you look at where students are spending their time on social media right now, it's Instagram and Snapchat. So the wording for here, my caption here, might look different than my caption on Facebook because kids don't speak the same way that adults speak when they text or type. I'm not going to use a U for Y-O-U or anything like that, but it's a little bit more catered towards the kids and their language that they speak. We started Donuts and Details last year, which is basically short for donuts and details, and it's a fun little Instagram initiative where kids get three random facts about themselves. They get their picture posted on Instagram, and it's just kind of a random way for them to get to know their classmates. LW Staff Spotlight highlights our staff, excuse me, and it shows just what our staff would have given them, what advice they would have given themselves in high school, what they wanted to be when they grew up. It's just a deeper dive into our staff. You'll see a lot of kids commenting on those, like, "Oh, my gosh, I love Mrs. so-and-so or Mr. so-and-so," so it's a cool way to connect with teachers. And then the other two things, LW Get Involved and LW Electives. Kids use social media to search for things that are available on our website. So if they're looking for a specific elective, they're not necessarily going to go to our website and say, "What kind of electives can I take this year?" Instead, look on Instagram for hashtags or locations where that elective may have taken place. So if they don't know what electives to take, they can search on the LW Electives Instagram hashtag, and they'll find a bunch of pictures that show what's going on in that class. So it's kind of a first-hand look into that. LW Get Involved is a way for kids to get involved, whether it be in sports or activities, and so they can click on that to find specific things that they might want to participate in. Website update. I cannot take credit for this. Cat Chong C is a website god. He updates this constantly. He helps me with anything I need. He had already started on the redesign. When I started here, I kind of just helped streamline the process. Basically, our old website, it was kind of like a spider web. So basically, when you updated something somewhere, it may not have updated in another place it was located. Now, he updates it, and it updates all across the board. So it's a much more streamlined format, where people aren't going to get two different pieces of information. There's always work we can be doing on this. Our next step here is to go mobile, so that when people are looking on their phones, because most people do access it from their phones, it's in a streamlined format. It looks okay right now on your phone, but it will look better once we have a mobile site. And then another thing we added was the transparency page. I had met with insuror members at the beginning of last year, just to talk about issues our district had, and talk about Community Relations and what we could do. A transparency page was suggested. I think it's been a great tool. Obviously, we still have ways to go, but it's a good start. And then Current Resources tab is down in the lower left-hand corner there, and you'll find that on the main page of any district or any school website. And basically, it just gives you quick access to anything that's new or upcoming. So lately, I've been getting a ton of phone calls about the Spring Musical, where's the information? So we added a little Spring Musical information dates. You click on it, and it's got everything right there. And then lastly, Board Docs, which was your initiative, so.
That's it. Any questions? Thank you. Moving on to action items, Presentation of Invoices for March 2017. Motion, please.
Motion to approve the outstanding invoices in the amount of $1,675,018.49 dated April 20th, 2017.
Do we have a motion? A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Cozal.
Aye.
Mr. Lucetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kirkland.
Aye.
Mr. Kostick.
Aye.
Mr. Lulo.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullinari.
Aye. Approval of the Treasurers Report for March 2017. The motion to approve the Treasurers Report. Second.
Second.
Thank you.
For the month ended March 31st, 2017, the district recognized revenues of $2,375,515.47 and expended $7,683,933.28. The total cash fund balance as of March 31st, the $7,356,381.83. And our total, excuse me, our total fund balance, when accounting for warrants and loans outstanding, is negative $156,43,618.17. For our fiscal year-to-date, the district has total operating revenues of about $46.3 million, which is 2.3% decrease, or about $1.1 million over this time last year. Our actual operating expenditures fiscal year-to-date are 6.5% less than the prior fiscal year-to-date at this time. 6.5% equates to about $4.3 million. And our total operating expenditures through March are $54.4 million. Again, the most significant factor in our 2.3% decrease in revenues year-over-year continues to be the delay in mandated categorical payments from the state. We have been told from multiple sources that we should be receiving our first payment, which was due to us on September 30th, by the end of April, most likely by the end of next week, which should be approximately about $870,000. We've also been told that this will only be, this will be the only payment that we will receive in this fiscal year. So, once you account for the money that they'll owe us as of June 30th, which would have been our fourth payment, they'll still be 2.5, about $2.5 million behind at the end of the year. I've commented in the past about our federal revenues, and we did receive a $407,000 payment in March for reimbursement for IDEA expenditures. I just submitted a claim for the quarter ended March 31st for $474,000, which I expect that we'll probably receive. Hopefully, it should be the end of May, because I believe they submitted it to the state this week. So, since the money flows through 8:43, they have to prove it first, and then we get the money. So it should be by the end of May that we get that. At that point, we'll be caught up with the total amount of federal revenues. We recognized about $1.65 million in federal revenues in total last year, so when you take the $474,000 plus what we have realized to date, we'll be right at that amount, and that's not accounted for any additional title money or anything that we received before the end of the year. So we're nine months through our fiscal year, and that's 75%. We've expended 73.2% of our budgeted operating dollars. I did comment in my memo this month that there was a slight uptick in March of our expenditures. I tried to explain why that was, really just timing differences. Looking at our April expenditures, they normalize, so we should be back to normal amount in April, in May, and June. We just had some large payments in February that had been paid in, I'm sorry, we had some large payments in March that had been paid in February in the previous year.
Any questions? Discussion? Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
When we, where are we getting our information from on how many more, how many payments we're going to receive from state categorical?
Scope or is?
Scope, so the business officials, Chris, in my conversation with the controllers, they didn't guarantee it, but they did say you will likely receive a payment by the end of this fiscal year. They could possibly voucher one June 30th, and what that means is that's going to be the next fiscal year. So, on the phone, they did say likely the September 30th payments will go out, their voucher. But Scope and under the business officials, even knows Brett Clark from the IESA in Springfield has also told individuals that he anticipates one, and he's been told that one more categorical will be paid.
We did get a driver's ed reimbursement yesterday, so that's a good sign. We haven't received anything other than general state aid in several months, so it looks like they are about to voucher in payments. Driver's ed is usually the first one to come in, with a smaller one, but.
I have information from Mike Hoffman, who is in charge of the policy, he's a policy and budget analyst down in Springfield. He informed me today that we can expect $1.1 million above the GSA. We've seen all the GSA, and then this is the mandated categoricals that we can expect to receive from the state.
So that's less than two payments?
Well, if that $1.1 million accounts for the one from last year and then one from this year, then it would be less than two payments. So, but if we have $1.1 million that we're still waiting to see, then that's a little bit more than one.
Am I correct, Kelly, with my math?
Yeah, sometimes they voucher them. It depends on when they voucher them, because they voucher them all separately. So special ed personnel is voucher, special ed extraordinary is voucher. So there could be a couple days delay on that, so they may be, they may voucher one or two of them before they do the other ones, and so it may be accounting for special ed personnel and not accounted for our transportation in that $1.1 million.
Are any of these folks making predictions for next year? I'm, I'm, I'm just curious.
So what is the? You took my poor stand on that topic.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask, I mean, what does this do for us from a cash flow standpoint for the remainder of the year?
From a cash flow, as we talked about Tuesday, we're very tight right now. Kind of go back to the fall. In the fall, we talked about our need for tax anticipation warrants. Last year, we borrowed $30 million. This year, we shopped, shopped our TAWs, we went to municipalities, we went to different banks. Old Sec was able to buy our tax anticipation warrants in the amount of $20 million. We knew that wouldn't be enough. We went back to another, buy the apple that we're willing to give, $23 million. We knew that would be tight. And so, without receiving our categoricals, we are, we closed on one of the properties in Manhattan, and that money will be deposited tomorrow. That would be, we already deposited the furnace money, Joe, so a million dollars will be deposited. So we're very tight in May with the timing of the tax distribution on the 25th of May. Our payroll has to be in place on the 18th, and so there's a timing issue there. The other timing issue is going to occur possibly the end of August, September, prior to our next set of distributions. We know that the $23 million we borrowed is on a variable rate, which makes, I know many of us nervous in terms of where the market will tend rate, which makes, I know many of us nervous in terms of where the market potentially goes. We've been in communication with other possible buyers of our TAWs, and it appears that we may be in position, if, if everything falls into place, to borrow an additional four million at a fixed rate. Fixed rate of 1.85, which is what we paid the previous year on our TAWs. That's what we started at currently. Now, we worked with Old Second. Did they get the number back to us, Kelly? We've been asking for the number of our current interest.
Our current interest? No, they were supposed to get it back to us today. We did not hear from them.
So with that four million, it's locked in, number one. Number two, it differentiates our borrowing. We'll not be holding until one loan. If we had waited until the fall when we anticipated another shortage, by the time we got up to the line, there may not have been any there. Batavia, Oswego, Sycamore, were all in line with us to receive TAWs to get through the next four to six months depending upon what happens in the state. Cook County municipalities have the money because of their tax distributions. So, as we work through this, if it still appears we're short as it does, if we're working with PMA through this, there'd be the possibility that we would be able to move forward with an additional borrowing. That would put our total TAW at 27 million. We would pay back our insurance in June that we borrowed.
It'll be four months when we hold in April.
So 3.2 million. So it'll be 3.2 million. We'll pay that back. If we're in position then to not need the entire four million, we can take that money and pay back the higher rate, higher TAWs through Old Second. Puts us in a little bit better position moving forward. We, you know, I've talked with our treasurer, Steve Langert. Brad and I talked about it a little bit. Kelly and I have been studying this for a couple weeks now. And then, you know, we've also worked with PMA to look at some of our cash flows. We worked, I did go to PMA last fall, and they shopped our TAWs, and they were all very, very high. It would be very high interest rates. Nobody at that time was willing to step forward for anything less than 3%. And, and to, to get a possibility of 1.8 fixed is something that if everything is able to be taken care of here over the next week or two in terms of the paperwork and forms and analysis, that's something that I would recommend we move forward. But we're in, we're still in the process now of receiving approval. Just the same process as we would go through the bank with attorneys having to approve. This would be, if we did this, this would be a TAW to our ONM. It would be held separate from the ed fund loans that we have right now. And so, from a cash flow perspective, it would get us through the next four to six months. From a lending perspective, it puts us in a little bit better situation. And as maybe, as we, you know, as we close this year, as we realize that surplus, there's more evidence that things are moving in the right direction. At the end of the first quarter, there were still a number of unknowns when we went, when we went to the market.
When does Cook County make their distribution?
The 25th of May. So it's a, is that Thursday?
I believe it's Thursday. And that will then go directly to Old Second?
Not all of it, but a certain percentile of that direct interceptal spectrum of Old Second.
And how did you come up with the four million? What was the math problem?
The math problem was, to be quite honest, that's what we asked for, thinking they would come back and say, well, we'll give you two or three. And the four million, the biggest expense, and we'll have everything broken down, but the biggest expense is the, is the paperwork and the legal fees. When you're talking 1.85% over that four-month period, if we're not using all four million, it's going into LMO funds. We are receiving some revenue, very little. If we're able to take whatever we don't use and pay off, then you're essentially replacing one with the other. The four million gives us enough that if the state doesn't pay, make payments in the fall, we'll get to that tax distribution in September.
So you'll have the math problem?
I'll have all of that problem, yes. We're working through that right now, Joe. I'm not asking for approval.
No, 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 it was discussion. And then you said something that was kind of interesting that you know in August and September, you can handle the shortage?
Possibilities.
Does that mean you're putting together a budget for this year?
We're right there, Joe. Right there.
What do you think?
Look at our cash flow. An actual line-by-line, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be June, July. We're going to have projections ready for you in May. We're going through right now and putting together the forecast, which is putting line-by-line expenditures in there based on what we're currently experiencing.
So May will be the five-thousand-foot view?
Absolutely. Of what, of what it looks like next year with these variables.
And anticipate the borrowing needs?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But 75, 80% of that we know would be salaries without a customer. We know most of the big.
And that's what we're plugging in right now, you know. And I, I understand Joe's frustration. I get it. At the same time, this year was about getting everything in order day-to-day, and we've made great strides there. Bringing in another experienced individual will help with our analysis and forecasting, and we'll have that ready.
What about, will it be at the May meeting where we'll talk about funding the budget or moving line items for this year?
Yes, I plan on having a resolution which will show the budget transfers for this year. I don't, I don't know if we'll have to amend the budget. It'll just be that those line item transfers, as long as they're less than 10% of the budgeted expenditures within that individual fund, they would just need approval from the board for transfer.
Any additional questions? Discussion?
Can you send the board members the current interest?
We can, we can. And we'll, we'll do a comparison to last year.
And it'll be different, obviously, this year with starting to pay off right when we receive those. Just also what was included in the budget, I guess?
We did put together an analysis just using the 1.85, and we're tracking very close to budget. It's just accounting for that floating factor. So that's what we were waiting for Old Second for. Interesting to get it to us today like they promised, so.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Cozel.
Aye.
Mr. Luchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kirking.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullinari.
Aye. And the motion to approve the student activities report for March 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
For the month ended March 31st, the total student activity fund balance is $1,906,166.87 with revenues of $440,106.22 and expenditures of $353,643.4. I detailed three accounts that were negative as of the end of March. The first one, the girls' swim team at Central is actually positive. It went positive again this week. So that's been rectified. The class of 19 at Central and East, I noted that those were negative because of prom deposits that had to be put down for next year. But as prom ticket sales come in, that, those will resolve themselves. You'll see that the reports this month are a little bit shorter. They only include the active accounts going forward. So hopefully, they're a little bit easier to kind of sort through.
Thank you. Any questions? Discussion?
Roll call, please. Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Cozel.
Aye.
Mr. Luchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kirking.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullinari.
Aye.
Personnel report. Mr. Schapf.
Good evening. Evening personnel report. Under employment, Kristen Belts, district, has accepted the position of district coordinator of group service effective July 1st, 2017. Rachel Foster, teacher, special services, special services department, has accepted a full-time teaching position for the 2017-2018 school year. Megan Januzewski, athletics, Lincolnway West High School, has accepted a position of assistant cheerleading coach. Mike Piacchinsky, teacher, special services department, has accepted a recall notice to a full-time position for the 2017-2018 school year. Ryan Stepinski, teacher, special services department, has accepted a recall notice to a full-time position for the 2017-2018 school year. Andrew Wingate, teacher, special services department, has accepted a recall notice to a full-time teaching position for the 2017-2018 school year. Nicole White, athletics, Lincolnway West High School, has accepted the position of head cheerleading coach. Jennifer Zarek, school nurse, Lincolnway East High School, has accepted a full-time position effective April 24th, 2017.
Any more motion? One second. Discussion?
Just, can you explain what a recall notice is?
No, I'm sorry. I thought we had.
Motion to accept is presented, please. So moved.
Second?
Second.
A recall notice?
Yeah. As you know, a number of, we had a reduction of force of a number of teachers last year. Just because when we went through our sectioning this year, we had openings in our special services department in these particular cases. Those teachers that are being recalled were teachers that were reduced last year by contract. They've got rights to those jobs as they open up vacancies. Our contract says they have recall rights for up to three years. So those folks, they were offered recall. They accepted. Now they will return to Lincolnway.
And so what this is a result of is you've seen a number of leaves come through here over the last several months back in New York, Gladmore. And so, some of the teachers that had dual, whether they were reading and reading in special ed with the movement of English, with the loss of English teachers, we've experienced reading English teachers back to English, moved the special ed teachers over to reading, and then created an opening. The other factor, a number of these individuals are going to approach one, and some in most cases, two sports force as well. So, this, this will help build some of our extracurriculars. But these were created by, by movements, retirements, and reductions. We're still down two, three full-time teaching positions.
We're down 15 sections.
Fifteen sections.
As we stand today, that equates to three teachers if we compare what we staffed last year, or this current year to what we're going to staff next year. So we're still down three full-time teachers. And those works work through the retirements that will, people that will retire at the conclusion of this school year.
How many retirements do we have?
Five full-time teachers will retire at the end of this school year.
And where next year is much larger.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Cozel.
Aye.
Mr. Luchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kirking.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullinari.
Aye. Retirements.
Under retirements, Bernard Colanda, bus driver, transportation department, requests to retire in the IMR retirement system at the conclusion of 2016-2017 school year. Yes, board, go.
Motion to accept the retirement, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Cozel.
Aye.
Mr. Luchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kirking.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullinari.
Aye. Continuing on with personnel resignations, please.
Under resignations, Min Elbaia, assistant coach, competitive dance coach, Lincolnway East High School, requests to resign from her position at the end of 2016-2017 competitive dance season. Min El will still continue to be a teacher at Lincolnway. Michael Beckett, teacher, special services department, Lincolnway East High School, requests to resign from his position at the end of the 2016-2017 school year. Joe Bolzio, assistant coach, football, Lincolnway Central High School, requests to resign from his position at the end of the 2016-2017 school year. Mr. Bolzio will continue to teach at Lincolnway. Percy Casey, head coach, competitive dance, pom coach, Lincolnway East, requests to resign from her position at the end of the 2016-2017 competitive dance season. Ms. Casey will continue to teach at Lincolnway. Michelle Eck, head sponsor, junior class at Lincolnway West High School, requests to resign from her position at the end of the 2016-2017 school year. Ms. Eck will continue to teach at Lincolnway. Christina Holson, assistant coach, competitive dance coach, Lincolnway East, requests to resign from her position at the end of the 2016-2017 competitive dance season. Ms. Holson is an off-staff coach. She does not teach for Lincolnway. John Terry, assistant boys basketball coach, Lincolnway East High School, requests to resign his position at the conclusion of the 2016-2017 boys basketball season. Mr. Terry will continue to teach at Lincolnway. Deborah Williams, registrar, Lincolnway Central High School, requests to resign from her position effective July 28th, 2017. Elizabeth Zapitalash, assistant coach, competitive dance coach, Lincolnway East, requests to resign from her position at the end of the 2016-2017 competitive dance season. Ms. Zapitalash will continue to teach at Lincolnway. Yes, board, approve these resignations, as presented.
Motion to approve the resignation, as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Cozel.
Aye.
Mr. Luchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kirking.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullinari.
Aye. Please, please.
Under leads, Tiffany Anastasia, teacher, English department at Lincolnway Central High School, is requesting to extend her parental leave to include the 2017-2018 school year. Jillian Hoprica, teacher, special services at Lincolnway West High School, is requesting a six-week FMLA at the conclusion of her maternity leave. She plans to return at the conclusion of the leave. Alicia Jacobi, teacher, English department, Lincolnway Central High School, is requesting to extend her parental leave to include the 2017-2018 school year. Brienne Snork, teacher, science department, Lincolnway West High School, is requesting to take a one-year sabbatical for the 2017-2018 school year. Yes, board, approve these leads, as presented.
Motion to approve the leads, as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Cozel.
Aye.
Mr. Luchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kirking.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullinari.
Aye. Other business.
Under other business, Ed Ward, grunt hour, full-time bus driver, transportation department, recommended for full-time status employment as he has completed his 19-day probationary period. And Matthew Murphy, paraprofessional, Lincolnway Central High School, recommended for full status employment as he has completed his 19-day probationary period. Yes, board, to approve these personnel recommendations, as presented.
Motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Cozel.
Aye.
Mr. Luchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kirking.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mr. Kastig.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullinari.
Aye. Moving on to approval of registration fees for the 2017-2018 school year. Any motion, please? We can amend the motion to be more specific. There will be something to open up discussion.
I make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. We've provided some backup material. There was also discussion Tuesday evening. In terms of fees, I'd like to break this down into two separate sections this evening. The first being the registration fees or registration and technology. Last year, the cost for registration was $275. I would propose increasing the register, the cost of registration to $300. Included in that $300 would be $10 for the additional test that we discussed in the fall. Then it increases $15. In terms of the registration fee, it is not based upon personnel costs. It's not to cover salaries. It's not to cover benefits. It must cover books, lockers, technology, cost of providing materials. The increase must be a reasonable increase. And as you see a comparison of our fees with the surrounding districts similar to ours, you know, we're, we're in that ballpark. I would propose that $300 fee and then also give the early bird discount to June 15th. In some discussion, I believe it would be fair to go to $290. Some of our feeder districts have a similar $10. I believe Lockport is also at $10. So I would propose the standard registration fee of $300 with. So I would propose the standard registration fee of $300 with an early bird discount of $10 to $290. I don't want any more discussion.
It was a little difficult to hear last night at the finance meeting about possession general consensus, when you guys were around the table.
Well, we went around the table, I mean, there was a general consensus of anyone who believed it was going to be, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, let's make sure everybody can hear, I'm like two seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So there was not a real consensus amongst, we actually heard a lot of different opinions. There was the opinion that if we charged based upon activities, that it should be a blanket, was, and if we're going to raise them, that, you know, based upon activities, that it should be, the majority of the people said that it should be across the board. Feel free to jump in, Chris.
Well, I think we're talking about something completely different here.
What I would propose is, we're going to choose.
Registration.
Just registration.
Just registration. Do we really, do we really break that out? It's just, I don't think.
We did at the, we did at the end, it was $275, $285. What we, what we discussed was $285.
With the $25 increase on last year's fee, it would be $300 with early bird discount. I would also include in that driver's ed fee remaining $250. We do have a waiver from the state of Illinois for that $250. Parking remaining $125. That fee will go into the O and M budget to cover, help cover the cost of our parking lot maintenance and striping, and then leave the cap down to $21, which is our cost for the members.
And then that, that $25 increase, it also includes the test of the ball. It has to pay for that.
What can this cover from a technology standpoint? From a technology standpoint, it can cover our contracts with your Comcast, any infrastructure upgrades that we have to do. Certainly any carts, any additional equipment that Brian has to purchase for the FBA year.
The other big one is the Microsoft licensing that we.
Yeah, and the licensing.
That's, that's. So what percentage of those costs does this cover?
Of the technology? We, we don't have every fee broken down by, funded by subject. All of the money goes to the FBA. We know that we have, you know, we're talking $128 million. Well, we have $128 million in technology and, and the cost for providing materials. Also in Xerox contracts, purchasing paper, or notebooks for algebra, geometry, algebra two.
We understand you, what the increase is expected in those line items that we feed into the number.
To next year? No, but I will tell you that our current rate doesn't cover everything that we could.
Okay. But it turns out if the costs go up, if the fee doesn't go up, the percentage of coverage goes down.
Goes down. Yes. This, this helps cover the cost of those non-salvative benefit costs. So we don't anticipate any of those costs going up. In terms of our, in terms of our licensing with our copiers, we know we're going to get a little bit better rate. We're talking Comcast, we know we're going to get a little bit better rate.
That answers the question.
Yes.
Twenty percent increase in technology is absolutely good.
No. In fact, his budget, these back there saying it's going to go down. As you recall, yeah, you know, as you.
He knows, but we don't.
Yeah, as you recall, this, at the beginning of this fiscal year, we had some catastrophic failure in our server. And so where his budget was, there's still about 150 left, Dr. Murphy?
Correct.
There's still 150, 50,000 left that we're going to come talk to you about in May and June, but at the same time, that we have that extra if something like this will occur in that budget. Brian, how much did we spend on the servers at Ballpark?
We spent $60,000.
$60,000 in July, we covered that, so.
And Dr. Murphy's five-year plan, if he rolled out a speculation, that would be, that's more important than servers and laptops and that kind of stuff?
Some of it can, some of it can. Now, this would cover any future one-to-one or on-your-own device. That's where we're getting surveys done now on all of our infrastructure, all of our access points. We have to have all that in place before we take that next step.
So this, this, that won't happen in the 2017-2018 budget?
No. Brian, what do we, what do you have in there built in so far for access points?
Access points, we're not, we're not increasing any access points. We have, our team is currently doing all of the access point work now, so that every classroom will have an access point, and our building will have much better coverage, or complete coverage, as we move forward. Our infrastructure is, we're working with Comcast, as Dr. Timely had said. With that is going to require a couple of hardware upgrades, but that will be part of the budget for the 17-18 school year.
Which still means.
You're still saying it goes down?
Yes.
Want to make sure we get the same down. All right, that is your question.
Historically, do you recall what the past two or three years with the fee and if there was an increase in this plan?
No, no, we increased. We increased $15.
$15. I believe we did $5 to $15 over the last four years. I know one year we stayed.
Yeah, historically, the only one that's really gone up is the student parking and driver's ed, because they weren't mandatory.
Driver's ed actually came down. It were $350, now it's $250.
I would think, you know, to the point of your setting these prior to the school year, I mean, we're obviously raising it by about here, but in the future, I think you have to kind of just keep up with CPI or something to, you know, tie it, increase to.
You mean annually?
Yeah, annually. I know, so Chris's point is you have to, you have to bring it back every year, but I would just think you don't want to keep on, you know, flat, 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 and then make your increase.
My hope would be beyond that, that when we go to look at this next year, we have the next fiscal year's budget, instead of we would see revenue shortfall, and maybe revenue surplus.
Full-time business manager.
That's leaving.
I know he finished his other district today.
Any further discussion? So we need, we need to amend, we need a motion. amend the motion. So we're going to amend the motion to approve 2017-18 registration fees to $300 per June.
$10?
With a $10 early bird discount of up to June 15th.
I would make that a motion.
You have to second. Okay. So there are discussions. No problems?
Mrs. Glass?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Lucetti?
Aye.
Mr. Kirking?
Aye.
Mr. Kastig?
Aye.
Mr. Lulo?
Aye.
Mrs. Molinari?
Aye. According to my head.
Couple different scenarios, yeah, a couple different scenarios, and this is obviously.
Talking about activity fees now?
Yes.
Should we make a motion?
Yeah. Or not, are we approving anything soon?
Motion to discuss, or you could say motion to approve activity, athletic and activity fees, if there's something.
We're on this table.
We table it if you want. So I ask for a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
One, one other discussion that I know some of the members of the board want to have is to take a look at activity or athletic fees. We did some comparisons with other districts. I do have, and I did, and I apologize, but a couple of our feeder districts, in terms of sports, anywhere from $35 to $50 for a sport, $25 to $40 for a club, and that would be for our feeders. It's been a discussion we've had in the past at the board level, and the decision has always been to, and leave things where they are. In talking with, you know, I had discussions with John Isow, our attorney regarding fees, and he said certainly this falls in line, this would not be an instructional salary, this would not be an instructional cost, so the district is able to, to charge fees. So we talked about different scenarios last night at Building Finance, it gave me a couple different scenarios in terms of if it were a one-time fee charged to everyone. Right now, we have 80/20 participation, 80% of our students participate in at least one sport or activity, 20% do not. So that, that's a discussion point. And the other discussion point, you know, we do fundraise. We fundraise in our activities, we fundraise in our sports, and, and so that's certainly a discussion. What it does allow us to do, if the board decides to charge a fee, is it puts us in position, we just talked about our whole, you know, we've got to start to work our way out of it. I don't want to put this on the backs of our current parents or students, we get at the same time, we have to start to protect what we have and what we're going to move forward. And so I, I think at least at this time, it's, it's fair for the board to discuss what scenarios we may be in favor of, or what scenarios we may, may explore. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you may. Do my best.
Open it up to our discussions. I would ask.
Just getting back to the use of the funds. Obviously, you laid out the restrictions on what the, the actual registration fees can be used for. Can you expand a little bit as far as what the fees for the activities, if you like those, what those can be, can or cannot, that they be used for? Yes, and, and these fees would, would most likely be used to, to offset the cost of salaries. You know, that's, that's very, very clean, very easy. These fees could also be utilized to operate our, you know, could be part of the distribution of principles that then goes to the music department, goes to the P D, goes then to the athletics department as part of what, what they receive each year. So, so these fees can go to get a fund and then be used for, for those activities and sports. I know there was some discussion last, last evening about the fundraising, and I know it hasn't been studied in 48 hours, but in terms of, we track, is there any tracking as to the organization fundraising, what, what those funds are currently being used for? Yes, you know, in discussion with the athletic directors and then, you know, obviously fundraising on the music side, used for a variety. You know, we, I know on the music side, I'll take marching band, for example, choreography, music selection, shoes.
I mean, yeah.
Travel.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it can expand.
It's gas for the.
Six years. And then in athletics, we are, we are, we have less stipends in every sport than, than our competing conferences, so, you know, it's part of the fundraising. In some sports, just pay an additional coach. Some, but most of it goes back to the students and forms your spirit wear. Kids like to call it swag. We also pay right now, which we didn't do this years ago, but now, part of it goes to purchase baseballs, purchase softballs, purchase equipment. You go to one of our football games now, on the sidelines, that camera is hooked up to the iPad that the coaches, and, and they're right on the sideline as the plays happen. And, and so those are those benefits, those extras per se. And, and all the fundraising is to go through Mr. Shipower's office now. Of course, this year, I bought a couple gift cards that, that didn't go through. That's what it said, that you get this sport or that sport. So we've talked to our A Ds, we have to continue to stay on top of that, but, you know, most of our coaches do a very good job of explaining to the parents what money's going, and that's something we have to continue to, to address and, and be on top of as we move forward. As I know, our, our music department, you know, from the Siam, the two weekends, I believe it is, all the way through, so, so that's certainly consideration, you know, that's a discussion. If a fee goes a certain rate, then it's hard, it's hard time for the parents to fundraise. I do know that some of our sports do have that buyout clause, where the parents, if you don't want to sell the, sell the booklets, you know, $150, or whatever, whatever it might be, and then that gets you your hoodie and your slits, and, and so, so that is consideration. I would assume that these, most of these schools, I see that they are charging activity fees for either athletics or activities. A lot of them are probably also in the age of fundraising.
Yeah, I've talked to them about that as well.
As well. So I'm seeing fees here on the low end of $50 to $75, depending on the activities. I see one here for 25, and I see they're going all the way up to $475, $234.
For certain sports.
For certain sports, so I'm seeing a lot in the $125, $130 range. Was there discussion to be, to, I know, I was there, but you guys are really difficult to hear with these mics, you're just.
So with the, with the finance committee on Tuesday, the, there wasn't really a consensus amongst the members there. There was a lot of discussion around, you know, the different costs, you know, for parents, and it was, we were looking at it more from, from appearance and the community side of it, that those parents, you know, when you go into band, you know, there's $500 in essence that those, those parents are paying for to, to participate in there. And when you look at that, and the, some of the comments were, you know, some of the people were willing to pay, you know, an additional $40 to, to have an activity-based fee. That did not include our, our discussion of what the, the standard fee, any raising in the standard fee, we, like Chris said, we were at 1, or 275, 285, when we were discussing that. And there was, they were all within the board. You know, the one thing I think that they came on, and it's actually the one thing that I, I would like to say is, I know that when we do an activity-based fee and we do it based upon use, it hurts our programs. It, it, it can become a barrier for some people from getting involved, and I think that's core to our mission here, is to make sure that we're keeping people involved, because we've proven over and over again that involved kids do better in school and do better here at, at Lincolnway. And the more we can do that, the better off, I think, will we be. That's my two cents.
One, one point I did for you to make, we did determine this morning, we would be able to assess this through Skyward and send, send out the email blast into the first semester into the third year to say, if you have an outstanding balance, the parent goes to Skyward, clicks on it, there it is, they pay their, whatever amount it made.
So this takes care of the logistics concern?
Yes, the logistics concern, and that was one of our concerns, is we didn't want coaches and sponsors to determine if it's being reduced or not. So we, we can do that through our system. It's planned this morning, and that's something we'll certainly be able to do if, if there are some.
Go ahead, Chris.
No, I was just going to ask, I mean, at the Building Finance Committee meeting, administration meeting, including the principals, it seemed like the favorite, if you had to do any fee, that you would do it, you know, it would be assessed as a participation fee across the whole student body, and not, you know, an activity-based fee? I mean, is that the, was that the only driver, is what you're? That was for the ease of use, because the fear was that's going to be on their A D to collect the fee, and the activity director to collect the fee, and after we took some time with Skyward, that, that's not the case. So I met with the principals again today, and we went through the activities and, and talked about, as Mr. Cosell mentioned, what the impact would be, and also which, which ones would we want to charge and which ones would we not. Like, you're academics, so you're, you're going to be applying to the National Honor Society, but chess club, math league, you're paying judges, you're paying for materials, and, and so we talked about some of the differentiation, and we had a very successful discussion, it was productive anyway, but I do think the ability for the districts to manage it does make a difference.
And what, then why, and why are you, you know, 48 hours? What's changed in the last 48 hours?
We did, we did more work on it. We did more work on it. So the logistical hurdle, I'm understanding what you're saying, the other night, there was consensus to assess it across the board for logistical reasons, and now some of those concerns have been alleviated based on how we were able to assess through Skyward.
Yeah, well, I, I would not say the consensus was to assess a fee.
If it was, if it was to assess that you were going to do it across the board, I should say.
There was no consensus to.
It was pretty well planted out in the middle. And you were under a registration if everyone was going to be assessed?
If we did everyone, it would be a registration, yes.
But now this will be as they join a club, they'll get our sport, they make this for the roster or the list is sent to some central location.
or the list is sent to some central location.
Within five days, it's got to go to the transcript, and we're able to link then that transcript through Skyward back to our bill.
But the principals, A Ds, coaches, it's administrative, central office, central office. And I just want to make sure I understand.
Just control factor as well.
Right. Good point. The, those that receive financial benefits, discounts, or whatever, just would transfer into the activity fees as well?
Correct.
So just think, I've filled out, I'm up to date on that this morning, but I just, I have, I struggle with activity fees. And I think I've made this pretty clear a lot. The kids fundraise, the parents fundraise, and I know, I don't have a child in the high school, but I clearly remember, and I still think it's going, huh, you come home and you got to sell coffee bugs. And mom and dad, you know, they sell two, and you write the check because they have to sell them all, and you own a lot of coffee bugs. That's what parents do. Saying it's right or wrong, some of the kids do sell it all. I think kids should be out there taking accountability and selling. I struggle charging a fee for sports areas, especially getting engaged in art recruits. I just, I have a real hard time with that, and I have a real hard time with that.
And I could appreciate that, because again, a lot of students here, like, if there's no margin, there's no mission. So in the absence of finding a way to fund these things, somebody's going to have to pay for it. Whether it's the people participating in it, I think what we're, I'm hearing in the conversations is more of a user fee. Or if we continue to offer it, the money has to come from somewhere. Because we can't continue to expand that in the effort of trying to maintain the mission. And so I understand, nobody wants to pay more, nobody's probably sold any more than the people that sit up here now. And your comment on how many Buffalo Wild Wings are in here. So I get it, they're all in our program, they're never used. But I think there comes a point where we have to, we have to take the moves where we can. And I don't think you have to be egregious moves, I think we have to introduce the concept that even if it's a nominal amount, that if you're participating, we know there's a cost associated, whether direct or indirect, and that cost has to be borne by someone. If not borne by the users, then it's borne by the district.
And I think, and I think you have to look at, we have to look at those extreme cases. We have to look at those kids who are in summer school, zero hour, and doing multiple sports. Without drivers' ed and without student parking, you're already talking of student fees over $1,000. And that, and I don't care where you are in the spectrum of, unless you're on the high end of it, that's a lot of money for a lot of, and when you talk about multiple kids in a school, and some of these families have two, three, four kids in Lincoln Way, that can be a true economic hardship and a barrier to get kids involved. And I think, I agree with you, we have to find ways to fund that. But I don't necessarily think this is the right way to look, because when you look at the bottom dollar, what this actually raises at $40 a student, I don't think it's.
It's a six-figure number.
Yeah, no, it's significant, but I don't think it solves the problem.
No, it's not a $27 million number, okay? So let's just get that on, this is not the silver bullet.
Right.
But the other thing it does is it gives people, it gives people choice. It's more than a bandage. A bandage wouldn't be borrowing. A bandage means you're kicking it down the road. This says that you know there are costs associated with it, there's expenses. And so you're trying to find a compensating revenue. And the evidence that we heard earlier, we would even open the state of Illinois next year.
That's right.
That's our second hardest revenue source.
That's where the balance is here.
But see, to me, the balance has shifted, there's no longer a balance. This theater daughter is like this, and we're trying to get it like this. And I'm not advocating that it be a $27 million move. I'm advocating that this gives people choice. I think people like that choices. This is an à la carte type of deal. That if you see, and you know what your financial resources are at your home, you need to make those decisions. That if your kid's going to be involved in math, if they're going to be involved in the sport, if they want to be in the French club, all wonderful things to do. And again, as a parent who.
But we talked about doing it for academics, not doing it for academics and doing it for other things.
No, we talked about.
Where do you draw?
He drew a line.
Well, so you see chess club.
Chess clubs is a choice.
Why is that a choice?
Because you choose to be in the chess club, Chris. You don't come in, you're assigned to the chess club. But if you're chosen to be part of the National Honor Society, you're chosen to be part of that.
I still think you still need to draw that line, though. There's still a line, maybe you're drawing.
But there's a cost to chess clubs.
And there's a cost of you have a data. It's not as much as chess, but I agree.
Okay, but that's where we draw the line.
Are the theater districts not charging activity fee? Not here?
At least in active, from a sports perspective.
Sports.
I think these, they all charge. They charge $25.
So I know in Frank, in 157, there's, it's $40 for orchestra and band, and that's from my own experience.
It's $100 for band in the lines.
Just to join in there.
Do they drop themselves and still sell something?
Oh, we have.
You know, I think we need to take a while, take baby steps, and I think we should maybe implement something, but, you know, if you have scholarship nights coming up shortly, you're going to hear those students walking across the stage with six or eight different activities they're involved in. And I think to hit them for 30 to 40 to 50 to whatever per is not realistic, not to start it off. I think we should maybe camp it at two or three, or come to some number that's somewhat reasonable as a start, and then next year you can revisit it and increase it, see what it is, see how it is. But I think to go from zero to 100 just overnight. And I don't disagree, but I think if we introduce it, and we make it, and I'm using a term that is open to interpretation, a nominal amount.
What's nominal?
I'm thinking 10 for clubs, 25 for a sport.
Is that not the numbers I was saying?
I understand, I didn't put these numbers together.
Okay.
Did you ask for a number?
Yeah, please.
So, I mean, run those numbers through the people that participate. Mom and dad want to be part of math, and your point for is 10 bucks. Okay, I understand that sometimes 10 bucks can be $10,000. You don't get it, Chris, I get that. But it's not, it's not a, it's not a deal killer number. And then, Ron, to your point, then it gives us a year to assess it, and then if we can see, because I think, Chris, you called for some form of almost cost accounting, based on the type of event, or the type of activity, or the type of sport.
I mean, my. So here's my viewpoint. I am against a participation fee being assessed at registration for everybody. 20% of people don't participate. I do not believe that they should be assessed a fee.
I disagree, I think, because if you do that, you hurt, you hurt participation, because there's some kids that may not want, that may not try out for the football team or may not try out for the badminton or soccer because they didn't pay that fee at registration.
He was saying.
Charge everybody.
Well, if you charge everyone.
No, 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 no. Hold on. I'm saying, I'm saying I am against, I am against. Having a fee at registration for.
Activities.
Activities and sports. I do not believe that.
And we determined that we don't have to do that, so.
And that was kind of how, that was kind of how the conversation was going at the building finance committee meeting, because that's how kind of the administration was saying, you know, it would be too difficult to do it, you know, an activity-based fee. So I am more in the camp, you know, with Joe on this, you know, starting with the LP. But what I would, what I think we still need to understand, because, you know, you're bringing up, you know, up to $475, no, hold on, hold on. Up to $475 in Lamont, which is probably for their cheerleaders and all the uniforms, everything.
Without.
We need a, I just want a better understanding, you know, okay, band is, it's $500 and then you have to fundraise. And also, band, the band boosters do a great job on the fundraising, you know, they have the sign of it overall. We need some transparency on athletics, what are these fundraisers going for? And I have a harder time charging a fee and then having them fundraise for baseballs as opposed to if they're just fundraising for spirit wear. So that's what I, so I want to see more information before we move forth. Because when you're doing it this way, if we have something in place by July, you can implement it this year. So that, I want to see more information on how these things are working.
Do you think that information would be available in the next 90 days?
I don't know.
I would pull up fundraising.
I mean, he's looking for basically a cost accounting by activity, by sport.
I don't necessarily need the cost accounting, what I need is that, like, directors are going to, you know, take control of this fundraising. And if a coach is going to fundraise, they're going to be sending a letter to those parents saying, this is what I'm fundraising for. I want, I want to make sure that there's a policy in place and there's transparency to where this money is going. Because I don't, I have, again, my problem is, if we're starting to have the teams or fundraise to pay for baseballs and fundraise to pay for soccer balls, then that's harder for me to justify charging a fee, and then are we just offsetting kind of that fundraising?
And I can appreciate that, but you're still saying that there would need to be a fee regardless of the results of the fundraising outcome? Or are you saying that this fundraising outcome may be the epiphany that says, oh my gosh, there's no need to charge a club or activity fee?
I believe it's hard to have, charge a fee and then.
Even a $10 fee.
I.
What you're going is that the fee may have to be higher.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying the fees.
I think the question becomes, whenever you want this assessment of these costs involved with particular activities, particular sports.
So he said cost accounting. What I'm looking for is what is this fundraising money going for?
Coffee cups and the t-shirt.
If it's, if it's for spirit wear and everything like that, I.
And it's across the board, it's not consistent.
Right, that's what I'm asking for, consistency. So consistency and transparency. They can be, they can be, but it's at that, it should be somewhat consistent. That's fine, transparency, at least have the parents know what that money is going for. I disagree highly.
I would say that we're different spectrums, we had the discussion where some of them want to do it at a very detail, and then some take it in and it goes back. But Chris, I want to make sure I understand, because now I'm confused. And I see this as mutually exclusive items. That the idea that we have revenue shortcuts, and we still want to maintain a form of academic experience that exists in the schools, we have to find a source to fund that.
Don't disagree.
Okay, so then one of the mechanisms to possibly fund that is to charge a user fee, or in this case, a fee for activities and sports, which all the theater districts do. So everybody coming into the school is already used to doing that, and then when they get here, they no longer have to do it. But we're not in that position to no longer be able to.
I agree.
But I guess what I want to say is, I don't think we, we have to give a sense of urgency to it, because this has to be in place going into 17, 18 school, but otherwise then we miss out on another.
We need a sense of urgency to fix the problems that I view as being, you have to be transparent, and you have to, I mean, you're asking now for additional money.
Yes.
I think if, you know, if you're going to have a sport, they should have some sort of buyout, they should have some consistencies, consistency to the programs that they're offering. I'm not saying everyone has to do the same fundraising. I'm saying it should be approved at a level and have some sort of policy in place. That shouldn't take that long to get in place.
Okay, so we're talking about policy, money, two different scenarios here. Are you comfortable with moving forward with assessing a fee?
No, because then everything doesn't get done.
So you're going to hold the fee hostage until the policy is placed?
I'm going to hold it hostage.
When would you both, I mean, would you not, would you both know all the way through the fiscal year and give up the?
I would say I would, I would think that something could be placed by July.
Okay, so I've heard a couple of different things here. Club activities, $10, sports, 25.
That was just a number.
Just the numbers you threw out, what does administration feel comfortable with?
I think, I think we have to say, are we going to do a per-user, or are we going to do a flat fee? I think that's where we have.
Well, I think we discussed that.
Shouldn't we see, shouldn't we see, like, projections of what all these things are going to bring in?
10 and 25 is going to put us right about $150,000. Yeah, that's why you use the $10 and $40, because we hadn't worked on that. But it also is, if you do, you know, there's been discussion of caps, not caps. You know, and I think that the lower the number, then you don't put a cap on it. If you go up a higher number, then it's not the same, then you may want to put a cap on it. We have a number of kids that do four or five activities. So, you know, many different scenarios, that 150 is based upon those students still participating in everyone. Same number of student participation, there'll be some variables there, but I would be comfortable saying at a rate of 10 and 25, we know we'll be able to hit that 150,000 revenue mark. With our new registration fee, we'll be in that neighborhood as well. So, you know, it's, over a couple of years, it certainly makes a difference.
That's without a limitation?
Correct.
Yes.
I would look at sponsors in the future, we're not buying equipment with fundraising stuff, that maybe the sponsors are supplying that, or there's a reduced cost or something that they ought to be doing.
That's correct.
You know, maybe there's something. Can we also look at gate fees? I mean, I know we don't make a ton of money, but is there any, what would we charge on average for a football game or something?
Well, the only things we're charging now, football, basketball, for the most part. And students, $2 this year, adults go up to 5. We stay in line with the conference on that. 5 makes it much easier in terms of ability to make change. And so it also depends, a major factor is who we play in the football season and how many home games we have. We know we used last year with three home football games, and what was it, in on the gate?
But then also our security goes up, I mean, we have fixed cost that co-op is resulting.
We do, we do bigger crowds, but if you, good draws offset that.
What, so I mean, I know you've got spreadsheet, trying to have a spreadsheet, but. What are the theater districts charging? I mean, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me that we would be.
40, 50 dollars, but I also say, the theater schools do not have the number of options that we do in terms of clubs and activities as well. So you're talking marching band, sports, we've got track and field, we've got cross-country volleyball, basketball.
Yeah, see, some have baseballs, some have softball. I understand, but I guess my question, is there much in the theater district that, coming out of the theater districts that you have in front of you, where the fee is, the fee is less than $25?
No, it's like 25 is below. I don't have, I think the only thing I know is 35 for sports.
It's 35, and I know more than that, 50 for sports. And Chris, did you just say that in lights, $100 for band?
For band, I would say it's 90 or 100 off my head.
I mean, it's.
But that's just band, but they don't have the full plethora of sports and things that we have here, and trying to fill some of those.
Some of those, I have is 50 for athletics, 120 for band.
So, I mean, would.
Band high.
And again, this is, this is something that we're doing that's very new, I appreciate that, but, I mean, would 25, 25 for activity and 50 for athletics be out of the question based on what people are used to paying in the theater districts?
Per factor is there a cap?
I don't think a cap is necessary. If you look at the number of students that are involved in one, two sports, it's a tremendous amount. There seems to be a breaking point whenever you get to that three spot. And the same way with activities, you know, you have activity involvement, it drops off whenever you get to more than four. Significantly.
Is that because of the money, or that's just because, I guess, students only have so much time?
My time, you know, there's only so many hours in the day. I'm realizing.
And you'll see more of the one, more of the two and three-sport athletes, which only get here in the classroom. And as there's fewer kids, they start to specialize as they move to the next one.
And none of us are, I'm looking on the table, and none of us are happy about this. The state would have paid their bills, we might not be happy with this conversation. So, but I think you keep it in line with what the theater districts, on the lower end of what the theater districts are doing might be appropriate. So I'm just, I'm just going to throw this in.
I think personally, I think it's being believed away, but I think if we're going to do something, it has to be a flat fee, not a per-user fee. I think it needs to be just a, and if you guys want to come back after you've been seated and look at it deeper, I think that's a, it'd be a useful thing, but I think, I mean, that's something.
And let me ask you one more question, based on that, do the theaters assess as across the board, or is it a user fee?
User.
So it is a, so it's basically not as a user fee?
And I disagree with the user fee for Lincoln Way, because I think it will, you know, for the opportunities for kids. I'm not afraid of charging a little bit more to try.
I'm not afraid of charging a little bit more to try and offset the cost because of the situation we're in, but I don't want to hurt the opportunities for our kids.
What are most schools that are, have implemented these fees? Do they charge at an activity level or registration level?
Activity level charge. And different schools collect in different ways. Some go, some, some schools you look in the AD and the AD tracks it down, I don't know if you track it down in your class. We say that fee, it's a need, you know, all students on the program reduced or special circumstances can we take into consideration. And as I said, we, we can, if we can do it, the district will.
And in the 55 years we've, have we ever charged for athletics or fee or clubs? Six to almost six years.
Not counted.
However.
If you haven't been in a situation either, I agree.
Does anyone have a motion to make, an motion, I should say, or amend a motion?
We can certainly come back for some fundraising information. I don't, I can understand, I understand Mr. Lucetti's point, I do. And I, and I do, I've talked to staff members who have kids in other sports and they said we had a meeting and they said this is where it was for. But I also know that we have certain coaches who don't have that communication in Insha and, and, and all night. So, I can appreciate that.
It's not, I mean, transparency department, but we also like, need to have the information in front of us before we implement a fee. I'm, I'm not opposed to the fee.
Is the other information you're talking about, the policy, is that the other information? What specifically are you looking at?
What are the fundraisers, what is ban, what is ban charging? What is, what are other, what are other fees?
But that's, that's the ban, that's their, that's their, it's not, it's not a board, it's not our role, the board go in and...
Decide what the vendors are going to spend their money.
I'm not, I'm not trying to make anyone spend money. I want to see what is being done and what, what these fees are because we're using comparisons where we have, you know, $475. Well, what is that including, you know, their uniforms, their, if it's cheerleading, you know, hair pieces, everything like that, the costumes? And again, I don't, I would like some clarity on what this fundraising is going toward because I think there's a difference.
Do you want to clarify the club? We have 60 in most schools, do you want for every club?
I'm not, I...
I'm asking you because that's basically what you're asking, not just man, not just, why not all the clubs? You need to know all that. And I think our role is to, is to set the policy that you need to communicate to the parents, but I don't think it's our role and necessary for us to go in and see if it's bows or if it's a skirt or if it's socks with lace on them, it's not...
I, I...
That's right.
I, I think it's hard, I mean, if we're, if we're taking a fee, we should be providing them with the equipment, baseballs and things like that. They shouldn't have to be out there fundraising for it.
Well, that's what I said earlier, if you're going to set a fee, then why are we funding?
It depends on what baseballs you're buying as, you know, you can buy a cheap baseball, you can buy an expensive baseball. Well, how many? I mean, I think where we're going, plus Scott, I think really it would be fair, we'd be throwing up different scenarios. I use my definition of nominal, Joe Costas' definition of nominal, we're different. I think we need to see financially what they...
If it was nominal, I don't think it was nominal, I was just trying to base it on what, what...
What the theater districts are doing.
I didn't mean to label this, I labeled mine as nominal. But, but having said that, I think we just need to look at the, the financial impact of those different scenarios. Because right now I'm trying to spitball and do it on the back of, just trying to come up with a number and...
That's what, that's what I was trying to say.
I get where you're going, this is too important of a decision. A, I think we've got at least some direction that we should implement something, but B, the extent to which needs a little more time.
So, $5, $10, what are we looking at in the scenario?
One scenario was Joe's, 10 and 25, another one was a flat fee from all across the board.
You've got, you've got flat in there.
And 15 and 35 for an activity within a sport.
I just said 25 based on what the theaters were doing because I thought it was nominal. And just, no, I know you did. I just, I just, just based on what the theater...
25 and 35.
Okay, so, how may you will have that information provided to the board and maybe the...
You can do this, I made the first.
Motion to table it.
Motion to table it.
What are you, I was just... I just don't know how early in the school year some of these activities start that we would have to assess a fee, that's been, that's been a reason I'm...
This is, this is...
You made an option.
Right, no, 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 I understand, but we're, but we're going to start. I see, so here, now that it starts, it's all, I see what you're saying, so you can still assess this?
We have a little bit.
We do have a lot of time.
Okay, point of order, please, we need a motion to table this discussion further.
I would make the motion to table it, please.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. Going on to the approval of bid for the boiler replacement at Lincoln Way Central High School. Would you like to make the motion for we can heating a bid of $468,484? Motion, please, to approve the bid.
Subsume.
Second? Second, thank you, and still one fee.
Basically, this is to replace the boiler, we've been discussing this for several months now. We did go up to bid, the low bid came in at $168,484, excuse me, which was a little bit more than we originally asked, we asked to do 414. But that's where it came back and that's the recommendation of our architect we just wanted to go with. The boiler replacement with reheating.
Reheating. Any questions?
Rich, is all the fees, licensing or permitting and everything that goes over fees that we're going to see in addition to that or?
Our architect fees would be in addition to the 468. We've already paid some of those, we won't know the exact, the architect fees until completion of the project.
That's what I'm thinking.
This is consensus, the finance, the, the...
It's the loans, the...
It's the loans.
There was, if this chat was, there was not a real discussion.
Then Rich, do you oversee this or does the architect, are they like the project manager or is that you or?
Our architect is the project manager.
Any further questions?
We don't do this with this company, though.
We have not, that was one of my concerns.
So, we've done any kind of, DLA did financial due diligence to make sure that they can actually do this.
DLA researched the company. As far as the $150,000 from insurance that we were talking, potentially be put towards the new boiler, has there been any further discussion or progress in that?
I, I don't have an update. I continue to submit invoices and I'm waiting for the insurance company to... And he has been, and maybe draw the final determination.
Well, we're not finished with our claim. We'll have to submit a rental fee for the month of May and then we'll have to pay the company to install it, to make it all apart. So, I would, I would say that sometime in June, July, we should have a final number for our costs in relation to that.
But there had, had been discussions on, you know, this $150,000, which would have been the cost to repair going towards the new...
Yes, we have asked the insurance company to cover the cost of what it would have cost to repair the existing equipment and give us that little bit towards our price.
Any further questions?
Rich, just one, who monitors like change orders, is that you or DLA if sometimes the low bid isn't always the low bid and by the time they get done, change orders, they're like?
I would, I would work closely with DLA on the project and obviously keep Dr. Pingley and Brad and him on any change orders.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, is that a typical contingency amount?
Accordingly, our architect...
Pro call, please.
Mrs. Lance?
Aye.
Mr. Cozel?
Aye.
Mr. Lucetti?
Aye.
Mr. Kirking?
Aye.
Mr. Coster?
Aye.
Mr. Lulo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bolinari?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid for the roof replacement at Lincoln Way Central High School with the company of Allen and Mackens, Rocking and Sheep Middle and the amount of $606,640. Motion, please.
Subsume.
Second? Thank you. Discussion?
Same question, we've done business with them?
With, with this company, we have.
In quality?
Yes, we're satisfied with our limitations.
And this can all come out of capital projects?
Yes.
Pro call, please.
Mrs. Lance?
Aye.
Mr. Cozel?
Aye.
Mr. Lucetti?
Aye.
Mr. Kirking?
Aye.
Mr. Coster?
Aye.
Mr. Lulo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bolinari?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion for the resolution authorizing loan from working cash fund to the education fund.
Hold on, let me get an amount. Uh, one, in the amount of 1.8 million. Motion, please. Subsume. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
To summarize this resolution, as you may recall, the board authorized a loan from our working cash fund to our transportation fund at the beginning of the year. We're at a point now where our transportation fund has been, you know, doing well and our educational fund is in most need of the 1.8 million. We had anticipated paying back the 1.8 million when we received our first distribution for the 2016 property taxes, but we feel that it's best with where the transportation fund stands to do that in April so that we're sure to finish the month of April with a positive cash fund balance in our educational fund. So, basically this, this resolution is rescinding the 1.8 million loan that was a working cash loan to transportation and then asking for a loan, once that's paid back, a loan from our working cash to our educational fund. And then, just to clarify one other thing, the rescinding language is used because the original resolution said that the loan will be paid back via tax distributions. So, since it's not being paid back via tax distributions, our attorneys recommended using the term send.
Thank you. Questions and discussion?
So, on the cash flow report, are we going to have enough? So, it looks like our balance is 2.7 million at the beginning of April?
In transportation fund?
Transportation fund, yes. So, is this going to cause us...
To be under?
To be overdrawn?
In transportation?
Yes.
No, we should be fine because the categorical payment that we'll be receiving, the majority of that will go to the transportation fund, not the majority of it, but a large portion of it for our special ed transportation. And even with that, I went over that with, with Steve today, we'll be holding another insurance payment in, in April, of which $200,000 will be related to the transportation fund, so we should be fine.
So, that cash flow is on the 1.7 million in revenue we're projecting in May?
Yes, and then continued receipts from our theater districts for transportation.
Special questions?
Where did the main proceeds, what funds is that?
It's going to go into Ohio.
Correct.
Yeah, we're going to the Ohio.
And that's where we put the deposits and then the million dollars is going to the bank account.
It's a little bit bundled, they do the same. When will the other person anticipate?
The, it has closed by the end of May and we're still trying to solidify a date. I think it was the 30th might have been in the, the original resolution, you know, but we, we asked if they would move it to the middle of May and it not been that bad, but the original resolution would be the money in the May.
We have a motion on the second, pro call, please.
Mrs. Lance?
Aye.
Mr. Cozel?
Aye.
Mr. Lucetti?
Aye.
Mrs. Kirking, uh, Mr. Kirking, any questions?
Aye.
Mr. Coster?
Aye.
Mr. Lulo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bolinari?
Aye. Thank you. Informational items, first reading of school handbook changes.
The District 210 Advisory Committee was asked to review three policies, the dress code policy, the code of conduct policy, and the public use permission policy. So, with that, I gave you the changes that were made with the dress code, it was reviewed and one of the things throughout the years is a lot of things have been added, so it was reformatted for clarity. And then anything highlighted in the blue are additions to the policy. Actually, everyone, including the students on the District 210 Committee, felt that the policy was very fair. We also looked for gender equity as we went through the policy. Then the code of conduct, again, it was time to just look at it in a little more depth. It's, the parts highlighted in green have always been a part of the policy, just rearranged again for clarity. The parts in blue were added to the policy and the parts in red were deleted. The parts added had to do with electronic cigarettes and/or improper use of prescription medication. And then also we added some social media, the misuse of social media.
Thank you.
And then lastly, the public use permission policy, it just did not make sense, it contradicted itself, and through that, we are going to an opt-out form. If someone does not want their child's picture or name put out in social media, then they have the option to opt out rather than trying to get everyone to opt in. So, this is the first reading, are there any questions?
Nothing. Thank you.
And Mr. Kirking, in addition to what you had asked earlier, the committee has been studying the advertising policy and the policy is very broad and they've come up with some brainstorming suggestions and it's more about taking action on it. So, we will get that to you for the next meeting.
Great, thank you, Dr. Mahler. Reported the Lincoln Way Special Ed District 843 governing, governing board meeting held on March 21st.
I attended that meeting. Thanks to Mr. Wilkie, as many hats as he wears here, he helps at 843 a lot. They just completed the 10-year life safety reports, business manager is currently putting it together, we have Tuesday's meeting coming up. We're going to review that, there's roughly 10 items. One, the parking lot needs some substantial repair, but the other nine items do not seem to be that bad, probably in the range of 150, maybe to 200,000, those could be handled over a three-year period. So, once I have a better chart and timeline after next Tuesday's meeting, I'll let you guys know. Dr. Tini and I continue to work with the staff there for salaries and benefits, we have another meeting on Monday, making some progress, but still in the works. We'll keep you updated as I move along. That concludes my report.
Thank you. For your request?
You can see here, backup materials for a FOIA request on March 10th or April 13th, total 16. Dr. Murphy has continued to respond to FOI's appropriately. If you don't have any questions, that concludes my report.
Audit findings, 2016 audit findings.
We had a conference call this week with Charlie, Mr. Lucetti, Mrs. Lance to talk about where we were. The one item to work on and its proposed completion date or close date would be made 2017 would be the statement of economic interest. We have contacted Will County, what are we, six, we're missing six, we're missing six. Those individuals were sent emails and then I will be checking with them again tomorrow to make sure everything is completed and turned in at a time of year. And that was the only item left for discussion. Anything to add, Mr.?
Anything to add, Mr. Lucetti or Mrs. Lass?
Nope. Okay. Building and grounds report.
Again, you were all, received the buildings and grounds report, operations names report, water report, gas electricity report. There's not a whole lot to, to discuss on any of those reports. Everything seems to be trending pretty much the way it has most of the fiscal year. Year-to-date, we're down about nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in these areas as compared to last year. Again, this is not a budget report and these expenditures for the most part are listed in the month in which they occurred and in which they were paid, so it's not something directly compared to budget. We seem to be making corporate progress still towards our goal, or our original asking that amount of goal of six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in savings in these areas for closing the north. We're at about five hundred and fifty thousand for eighty-five percent of the estimated savings, seventy-five percent of the year. Attached, also there was a proposal from a tennis court construction company to evaluate our tennis courts and maybe come up with some options moving forward. Options other than complete replacement. We talked about it a little bit at the building finance committee or financing building committee and there wasn't much interest in pursuing that. There are two bid packets attached, one is for pavement maintenance, the other for custodial supplies. We will open both on May fourth and then bring them back to the board for reconsideration.
And we will also bring, we were asked of the building finance, kind of give a conceptual three-year look at these statements.
For the pavement maintenance? Yeah, this is separate from the pavement plan that we did with our architect. This is maintenance that we've kind of deferred over the past few years. We feel that over a three-year period, we should cover all of our blacktop. It's complicated a little bit by the fact that some of the blacktop needs to be replaced, so we will put together, I guess, a spreadsheet or maybe a site plan with years on the lots and identifying the lots just to help you understand where we are in that plan.
I appreciate the draft capital project plan. Is this something that we'll take into corporate, into our budget for five years or five years ago, I assume?
Yes, that's something we're going to work through. As we look at this, there's going to be ongoing discussion. You know, there are large ticket items in the next couple of years that we will need to decide based upon where we're at with revenue. Is that something we want to attack this year or is that for another year? Tennis courts is the first, will be the first discussion next year in terms of, boy, this is a really big ticket item and what are our other options? I, I had said last night, we've reached out to all the park districts, their courts, Bible courts, court usage. We have ten at each school, number of schools have six or eight. I was looking at our, at our roster, I've looked at our roster numbers and what that would mean for us. You know, right now, the courts that we deem unplayable do not have that song. We don't want anybody getting, we don't want anyone to be injured. Lincoln Way East has utilized North and also will utilize courts in Mokena for one of their invitations. Mokena has agreed to allow us to host an invitation next fall as well at one of their courts. So we'll continue to work through these capital projects. You know, Brad will take some of them, fit this into the forecast, but we also need to realize in three to four years that five million dollars is no longer there in the capital projects and that's something we have to begin to plan for. But this is a conceptual draft and then will continue to be evaluated as we move through.
Any further questions? Community relationship work.
Hi, Ben. Lincoln Way West Senior Analyst Trout received honorable, honorable mention for her writing portfolio at the twenty seventeen Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. This is basically the equivalent of going to state in English, so it's really cool. Other famous people who have received awards are Andy Warhol, Stephen King, Leighton O'Donnell, so it's just a really prestigious award. The Lincoln Way Central Boys varsity volleyball team volunteered to help out the music boosters by hosting a funny breakfast during the second weekend in April. Players helped young children with games, directed guests to different activities and had quite a bit of fun themselves. If you check out our Instagram, I think they had more fun than the kids. Lincoln Way East Junior Amanda Port was sworn in as the new lieutenant governor for Division Twenty-Three of the Eastern, the Illinois Eastern Iowa District of Key Club. It is like one of the largest districts, so she communicates with, I believe it's over thirteen other key clubs and makes sure they're communicating properly with headquarters and making sure they're getting the funding they need to help out in their communities. So it's a really big honor. The Sealed by Lyricacy event was held last night at Lincoln Way Central. Over a hundred students, it was a hundred and ninety total from all three schools, celebrated their language accomplishments with their teachers, family and friends. The audience heard from students in Spanish, French, German, Chinese and English. And then the casts for each of our new musicals have been busy rehearsing for opening day. East Oklahoma actually opened tonight at seven P.M. It will also be performed on April twenty-first, twenty-second at seven P.M., and April twenty-third at three P.M. Central will perform Guys and Dolls on May fourth, fifth and sixth at seven P.M. And West will perform Touch Me If You Can on April twenty-first and twenty-second at seven P.M. and April twenty-third at three.
Thank you very much. Asset of the month.
Asset of the month for May, positive view of personal future, home, help your child, find their passion center, areas of strength or areas of both interest and strength in the community. Great speakers with positive inspiring local message to the community, invite teens and children to these talks. And at schools, celebrate success with students, both large and small scale successes. That's the asset of the month for May.
Thank you. Legislative report.
Put in your backup materials legislative report that came from the Purple Alliance. This is from April seventh. There's really been no movement as many of the legislators have been home these last two weeks, so we'll see what happens when they go back to Springfield. I'm certainly not optimistic, don't have a crystal ball, budget talks continue. The latest I heard is potential five-year income tax increase coupled with a five-year property tax freeze. That would be problematic for municipalities, local government. That is some of the discussion, ongoing discussion of pension reform, pension shift, but once again, until something's actually moving, nothing additional to report.
Thank you. Honorable, I'll go to the first.
So our tennis district report, once again, in pride of Lincoln Way is your, is your backup materials. Congratulations, Annalee Trout, she's announced regional award at the Scholastic Art Writing Awards as, as, as chair of the championship. And there's other, other samples for students for your review.
Thank you. Any other district business or course?
Yes, under district business, I would like to acknowledge and thank Mr. Chris Cozal, Mrs. DeMuller, for their service and their time to the district. Your leadership and your commitment to the students is invaluable over the last several years for both of you. I can't thank you enough personally and I can't thank you enough on behalf of our faculty, staff and students for all that you have done. This is a small token of our appreciation. Thank you very much. Both of you.
One other thing, Madam President. If anybody had an opportunity to see Oklahoma or any of our plays, I'm kind of an Oklahoma enthusiast over the last twenty-five years. I've probably seen it performed six times two years ago at Lyra Opera. And I'll tell you, I caught yesterday's show and it was just amazing as all our students' performances are. If you get the chance, please go out and support it. It is unbelievable. Thank you.
And I just, and I just want to say a personal thanks to Chris and Dee. You've been side by side for how many years? Fifteen? Twelve? Okay. And it's been a journey and I thank you for everything, working with you side by side. Dee's been six, seven? Five? I don't remember. Okay. So I see my rap is really good, but I just wanted to personally thank both of you. It's been, it's been a pleasure to work side by side.
Thank you. And I would like to thank all of you. It's been a pleasure getting to know you. I'm working with you all for the past five years and less for some of you. Certainly been an honor to serve the Lincoln Way community. I will still be around. I have a vested interest as I have property here and life has many journeys and this was one that I will relish and move faithfully upon. Thank you all. Motion to adjourn, please. No close session? All right? Dr. Tingley? Even if you adjourn.